Good evening, Santa Paula. Bienvenidos a todos de Santa Paula, aquí a su Consejo Municipal. Welcome to your city council meeting today. I call this meeting to order at 6:37. Sorry for the delay, we were coming out of another meeting. We're going to start with our invocation. We're going to invite Reverend Adiken Alqueline to join us at the front. And I invite everybody to please stand. Si pueden pararse, por favor.
Let us pray. Heavenly Creator, we gather here to thank you and humbly ask for your blessing for our community. Guide us by your wisdom and the grace given to us by the Holy Spirit so that we may reach unity. And let not pride, envy, nor greed be our compass. We thank you for the gifts to live freely in this country, even as we acknowledge our differences. Differences that can be discussed with no malice or rank or... It's the ability to have these differences, to acknowledge them, to discuss them, to remain cordial and respectful of those with different views. That, after all, is one of the hallmarks of our country and our community. We thank you for the gifts you have showered on us. They will inspire us to inspire others. And we remind ourselves that we must never grow weary of doing what is right. Amen.
Remain standing. Si pueden quedarse parados, por favor. If we can have our city attorney lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Hand on your heart. Great, Adiken. And to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated. And just a reminder to please silence your cellphones. Por favor, apaguen sus celulares. And we're going to go to roll call vote.
Councilmember Crosswhite?
Here.
Councilmember Cornejo?
Here.
Councilmember Ornelas?
Here.
Vice Mayor Juarez?
Here.
Mayor Chavez?
Here.
All present.
Great, next item we have closed session report. City Attorney?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This evening, council recessed into closed session during a special meeting to discuss Item 5A on the agenda. Conference with labor negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6. The city representatives are Chief Labor Negotiator Irma Rodriguez Moisa, City Manager Dan Singer, Finance Director Chrissy Ramirez, and Human Resources Specialist Lorena Alvarez. The groups involved were Employee Organizations, Community Services Officer Association, Mid-Management Association, Professional and Supervisory Association, Service Employee International Union Local 721, Santa Paula Police Officers Association. And the unrepresented employees were the Executive Management Group, Confidential Employees, and Part-Time Employees. There were no reportable actions taken this evening. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, City Attorney Castillo. We are going to public comment. At this moment, we'll provide you three minutes to address the council on anything that did not appear on the agenda. We're going to start with Elma Aguilar. Elma?
Thank you so much. My name is Elma del Aguila. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Across Santa Paula, longtime residents and tenants are struggling with extreme rent increases. They simply cannot afford. At 400 mobile estates, residents recently received notice of a nearly 45% rent increase. That, in reality, totals to over $200 more per month. These tenants include farmworkers, retirees, elderly residents, single parents and families supporting their children's education, residents who have easily lived here for the majority of their lives. Many are now facing impossible choices, whether to sacrifice basic necessities, take on second jobs, or leave the city altogether in search of affordable housing. At least 90 residents have submitted letters opposing this rent increase, and we urge the city to take action. Santa Paula's Mobile Home Rent Stabilization Ordinance currently allows rent increases of up to 12%. That is far too high. We ask that the council amend this cap to 3%, in line with neighboring cities like Oxnard and Ojai, and close loopholes that allow for excessive increases. Now, for the rest of the city, we need the city to expand the Mobile Home Rent Control Ordinance that the city already has. Let's expand this Mobile Home Ordinance to include the rest of Santa Paula, including apartments, multifamily dwellings, all over the city. Many tenants work seasonally in agriculture with unpredictable incomes that require saving for months when work is scarce. Retirees rely on fixed social security checks that do not stretch far enough to cover skyrocketing expenses. Meanwhile, the cost of basic necessities, groceries, utilities, and gas has risen dramatically, while their wages have not risen at that same pace. Rent increases should reflect actual cost of living trends, not burden working families beyond what they can afford. We also urge the council to protect tenants from retaliation, as many fear rent hikes, evictions, or worse, interactions with law enforcement, or ICE, when they stand up for their rights. We want you to establish a rental registry. This would provide transparency and accountability for landlords and tenants while guiding better policy decisions for our city. Rental registries can be looked at the same way as a Measure R and T. It can be a solution for learning more about tenants while providing a revenue source for the city. Rental registries help us learn more about our renters while at the same time being an avenue to generate revenue and address the needs of our renters. Santa Paula has an opportunity to be a leader in protecting its residents. We ask you to stand with us to create real tenant protections and ensure that these hard-working families, retirees, and residents can, for a long time, call Santa Paula home. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Elma. Next up, we have Silali Salgado. Three minutes on the timer.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Silali, and I'm the Santa Paula Cause organizer. Tonight, I'm speaking about growing concern that's affecting all of us in Santa Paula, which is the impacts of extreme weather changes like heat waves, mudslides, wildfires, and flooding. The extreme weather changes we've been experiencing in recent years is no longer an occasional issue. It's becoming a constant threat to our community's health and safety. It's time for our city to take action. We need a comprehensive climate action plan that recognizes the impacts on our most vulnerable populations, especially our elders, children, and low-income families, who often do not have the resources to stay cool. We're calling for more consistent climate resilience hubs and cooling centers across the city so residents have easier access to resources. These spaces are critical during heat waves. In June, CAUZ Youth Fellows did a heat survey where they spent six weeks having in-depth conversations with community members to learn about how Santa Paula residents deal with extreme heat. The overwhelming truth is they learned that the only cooling center in all of Santa Paula is the community center. Community members stated there were some days that were really hot and the cooling center wasn't open, or the hours were short. The fellows did a site visit to the community center, and after speaking with staff, they realized that the cooling center's operational hours are decided on a case-by-case basis with direction from the county. It would benefit Santa Paula residents if the city were to provide more local input to ensure equitable access and meet the needs of residents. The lack of easy access to cooling centers can compound health risks associated with high heat. When students have heat days and are released early from school, they often have to walk home since their parents are at work. Around 60% of a couple hundred people the youth fellows surveyed over the summer shared that they do not have or use AC to cool down in their home. That means we need to ensure we have cooling and/or climate resilient hubs readily available around town to provide basic amenities like water, shade, seating, resources from local organizations, and ensuring that these centers stay open during consistent hours so that people know where to go when they need relief. We also need to think about accessibility. We must think of providing transportation options for those who are unable to get to these centers, especially elders and youth, so that no one is left behind in the heat. We need to improve our public transportation in Santa Paula with more dispatchers and bus route availability, or even having more shaded bus stops. Many youth who have wanted to attend the teen center across town have mentioned it's hard to dial a ride because they often need to be reserved ahead of time or there is limited availability. We also need to invest in more green spaces throughout our city. These are natural cooldown zones that would help reduce how much hotter urban areas with asphalt can come in comparison to rural areas. For example, on Harvard or other roads, we could have road dividers that include plants to help with shading and cooling our town. All of this shows we need a climate action plan, ensuring that we're not just reacting to climate change, but actively preparing for its consequences. We need more climate resilience hubs that are not just cooling centers, but are open for other emergencies or can be used for learning centers. For example, people who live by Las Piedras Park.
Thank you very much, Silali. Next up, we have Nidia Beayo.
Thank you. My name is Nidia, I'm a policy advocate with CAUZ, and we hope that these comments will be taken into consideration as part of the strategic plan as well. And then to finish off what Silali was saying, we need more climate resilience hubs that are not just cooling centers, but that are open for other emergencies that can be used for learning centers. So, like, for example, folks that live by the Oaks went several days without power a few months ago when they were facing high winds and fire was going down South Mountain Road. And a lot of folks didn't know when or if to evacuate. And we believe the city must start planning for the future of Santa Paula residents. We need to develop a citywide evacuation plan with community input that will ensure everyone can safely respond and act efficiently during an emergency. And at CAUZ, we believe in public safety. And when we say public safety, we mean that everyone in Santa Paula deserves the right to live in a safe, secure, and healthy community. Housing insecurity destroys families and communities. That's why rent control and tenant protections must be viewed as public safety. Better paved and maintained streets and sidewalks and streetlights that work and neighborhoods that are well-lit is a pathway to public safety. Having a detailed climate action plan that addresses extreme heat, lack of local transportation, and better modes of communication during a natural disaster. Does it make sense that current city emergency communication strategies rely on internet and phone services, which are disrupted during power outages? We are an accident away from becoming another Altadena or Pacific Palisades. Addressing this should be looked at as addressing public safety. We want to build a better and stronger working relationship with our police department. Public safety is best achieved when the community has trust in a strong, respectful working relationship with the police. We must create more opportunities for community members to trust the local police. Ensuring that local police are part of helping the community parse out false information from ICE would go a long way in establishing a trusting relationship that will enhance public safety. And lastly, public safety must be looked at as investing in youth. City funds need to be allocated to create more youth programs, including Avid, expanding libraries, youth centers, and recreational spaces. Investing in youth must be looked at as investing in public safety by prioritizing saving, emergency preparedness, housing stability, community police relationships, and investing in youth programs. Thank you.
Thank you, Nidia. We got John Marquez.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, staff, and the community. John Marquez, I'm the Executive Director for the Chamber of Commerce, and I just got a couple announcements for some upcoming events. Currently, we are still in the middle of doing our best to Santa Clara River Valley. We have two weeks left in this for nomination, or for voting. Currently, we have almost 400 businesses engaged throughout the whole valley. We have, right now, about 2,500 people that have voted, and we have about 15,000 votes that have been submitted. So it's been really huge, a huge event, very successful. This is free marketing for the entire valley, so this has been a very engaging program by our community throughout the entire valley. So, if you haven't voted yet, go visit bestcrv.com, and you can put your vote in. Next up, we have a grand opening for a new business downtown. It's called Rocket Bins on 969 East Main Street. They're going to have it on Thursday, April 10th, at 10:00 a.m.
What was the name of it, I'm sorry?
Rocket Bins. Yeah. So, Thursday, April 10th, at 10:00 a.m. And so, please join us for that. Chamber will be doing a ribbon-cutting ceremony. It's a great new location. It's a family-owned business. So, we have been in there a few times. My wife shopped plenty of times in there already, so she's... So it's a good story, though. Very good. So, please join us for that. And finally, cruise night. Cruise night starts this Friday, April 4th, from 5:30 to 7:30. We invite everybody to come out and join us. We're going to have over 200-plus cars there. We have entertainment from the Wade Brothers. They've been doing this year after year for us. So, please come and join us. It's a free event. We invite the public to come out. It's going to be a nice evening, so we ask everybody to come out, support local businesses, grab some food downtown, just help support our local community. So, with that, thank you.
Sure, question. Mr. Marquez, just for the benefit of the public, could you list the times and kind of some of the restrictions that are being put on traffic, vehicle traffic?
Yeah. Time start, people can bring their cars in between 2:30 and 4:30. The streets will actually close about 4:30. Entry points will be on Mill Street this year. And 10th Street and 8th Street will be closed. So, as people come in, they'll have to loop around to Main Street. There'll be signage and everything that direct people. And we ask anybody that's parking their vehicle there to stay there until the event's over, because we don't want people driving while the public's walking in the street. So we're trying to really, working with the police department, working with the city. We want this a very safe event. So we just ask our participants to just be patient, just sit back and enjoy the event. So it should be a good evening, so.
And just to follow up, how are the sponsorships going with the local businesses in the community?
We've had huge support on the sponsorships. So, over the last two weeks, we've gotten several businesses that have engaged and supported us too, outside of the zone too. So, we've had all of our restaurants being engaged. A couple of our car enthusiasts have supported us too. And then plus the P-Bid that actually helped support it as well. So, as of right now, we're looking really good about paying this event off.
And the city, correct?
And the city as well. So, can't forget about the city. So, all right, thank you.
Thanks. All right, we got Rafaela Moreno.
Buenas noches, alcalde y miembros del Ayuntamiento, y a todos los que están presentes. Buenas tardes también. Mi nombre es Rafaela Moreno. Vivo en la ciudad de Santa Paula, en el distrito 2, el cual pertenece a Carlos Juárez y Jenny Crosswhite.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmember. My name is Rafaela Moreno. I live in Santa Paula, on District 2. The one that belongs to Carlos and Johnny Crosswhite.
Carlos Juárez and Jenny Crosswhite. Hoy hemos venido a volver a traer a la mesa un tema que se trató en el 2019 acerca del humo de segunda mano en nuestra ciudad en octubre de este año. Presentaban un grupo de residentes sobre la preocupación del humo de segunda mano.
We come here again to talk about a topic from October of 2019 about second-hand smoke in our city.
I lost that in October, I'll teach her. Oh, okay. El tema se propuso por razones de la pandemia y quisiéramos que se volviera a tratar, ya que otras ciudades en el Condado de Ventura tienen ordenanza sobre el humo de segunda mano.
The topic was delayed because of the pandemic, and it was to talk about this again, since other cities have ordinances about second-hand smoke.
Me preocupa los niños que asisten a los parques y están expuestos a humo de segunda mano, y eso les afecta en la salud.
I am worried about the kids that go to the parks and are exposed to this second-hand smoke, and for their health.
Nos hemos vuelto a reunir y estamos juntando información. En lo personal, estoy llenando encuestas de personas que viven, trabajan, y visitan familiares en esta ciudad.
We are gathering here, we are here today, and we are also gathering information about this issue. I am also doing surveys around the city to people who live, work, and visit their family members here in Santa Paula.
Este sábado tenemos una actividad en el Parque de los Veteranos empezando a las ocho y media de la mañana. Estaremos juntando basura, la cual se genera de los productos del humo de segunda mano. Necesitamos una ley para prevenir este tipo de actividad en los parques, en las paradas de autobuses. Gracias por su tiempo.
This Saturday, we have an activity at Veterans Park starting at 8:30 a.m. We will be collecting trash, which is caused by the second-hand smoke it generates. We need a law to prevent this type of activity in the parks and bus stops. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Gracias, Rafaela. Thank you. Mr. Singer? For the record, could you just share the information regarding the smoking ordinance and the potential timeline?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. We are planning to bring ordinance options to the council this year to discuss the strengthening of our existing smoking ordinance.
Thank you.
Probably this summer would be my hunch.
All right.
And just to add to that, I believe there may be some community outreach and soliciting of input in the future.
All right, so next up we have, thank you for that. Next up, we have Ricardo Soto. Ricardo? Bienvenido.
Gracias. Gracias, buenas tardes a todos los miembros del consejo. Buenas tardes, alcalde y miembros del ayuntamiento. Mi nombre es Ricardo Soto. Vivo y trabajo en Santa Paula. Estoy aquí para recordarles que queremos darle seguimiento al humo de segunda mano. El tema se presentó en abril de 2019. Este tema se detuvo por motivo de la pandemia. También, un grupo de estudiantes en octubre del 2019 tocaron este tema. Ellos presentaron pruebas con colillas de cigarros y plásticos de vapeadores electrónicos que se levantaron en los parques de Santa Paula. Queremos que pongan una ordenanza para los lugares como los parques, la lavanderías. Pusieron una ordenanza a los dueños de lavanderías que pusieron letreros anuncios visibles de no fumar dentro de los negocios, porque algunas veces están niños, mujeres embarazadas, que pueden agarrar los contenedores, especialmente para los cigarros y vapeadores usados, que los tiran nomás al piso. También podemos regresar y presentar evidencia sobre los lugares y cuántos cigarros y vapeadores electrónicos se han encontrado. Estamos trabajando para el 5 de abril en el Parque de los Veteranos para levantar colillas y cigarros. También el 27 de abril en Piedras Park. Y seguimos con la iniciativa por tener una Santa Paula saludable. Gracias a todos por escucharme.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Councilmembers. My name is Ricardo Soto. I live and work in Santa Paula. I'm here to remind you that we want a second follow-up. The issue was presented in April 2019. This issue was halted due to the pandemic. In October 2019, a group of students addressed this issue. They presented evidence of cigarette butts and plastic electronic beakers that they put in the parks of Santa Paula. And we want you to put an order in place, like laundromats. The owner should put up visible signs warning them not to smoke inside their businesses, because sometimes there are children and pregnant women. They should put up special containers to buy, to put cigarette butts, and use beakers, and not throw them on the ground. We can also return and present evidence about the locations and how many cigars and electronic beacons we find. We are working on April 5th to go to the Veterans Park to collect cigars, and also on April 26th to Piedras Park. We will continue with the initiative to have a healthy Santa Paula. Thank you.
Muchas gracias, Ricardo. Is Jonathan here? Is Jonathan here? Jonathan, can we make sure we connect regarding posting those two activities into our... Thank you. Alright, we got Susan Barrano?
Good evening. Thank you for letting me speak. Resident of Santa Paula for approximately 15 years now. Love the city, love to see what's going on. A little upset by something that's going on. We do not have a way to get revenue into this city. We've lost big stores. We're not getting too many back in. We'd like to see a dispensary in this city. The revenue generated is immense. Other cities have replaced libraries, police departments, fire departments, schools, roads, so much can be done. We need to generate that revenue here in Santa Paula. This is not a simple thing, and there are very, I live in a seniors' mobile home park, and I can tell you that there's a lot of us that would be very grateful to not have to go to other cities and put our money in those cities and not here in this one. We're talking about containers for butts. We're talking about cleaning up. We're talking about having better libraries and have them open and youth centers and everything. We need this. We need a dispensary. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Mister Abbott, where you at?
Yeah, good evening, city council members, mayor, vice mayor, city manager. I'm not gonna talk about Andy Gluck campaign. I'm here simply to see if I can get any information at all on the Santa Paula Animal Rescue Center, you know, Spark. I haven't read any, I've read nothing in the newspaper, our local paper or anything. I don't know what's going on. And this is an issue that's dear to my heart, my wife too. So, do you have any information on situation with Spark?
Jonathan, can you fill him in and provide him some resources so he knows about what's going on? And just for the record, Spark terminated their contract with the city, gave us notification. So, we're trying to find a plan to replenish some of the services that were provided. And we're in the midst of that process now.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you, Mister Abbott.
May I contact the deputy manager?
Yeah, he's actually gonna...
Well, there he is.
Love that guy. Thank you, Mister Abbott. Okay, and just, just so that everybody knows, right now, the city is going through a strategic planning process. We've been together as a council and community and residents as well who came and shared with us their concerns and their, their wants and their needs, that we're establishing what that's gonna look like for the next two years. So, it's a really exciting time to raise up your voice and be part of process. Stay tuned, because part of being of a democracy is making sure you're continually being part of the conversation. And so, it's not just one issue. We want you to be engaged. That's why we created a newsletter that you can sign up to, get information on the spot of all the wonderful things and changes that are happening here in Santa Paula. And we'll be excited in the next month or so, maybe two months, to present what the vision, our mission, and our strategic plan looks like for the next two years. And we, as a council, have heard you, and many of the concerns have been placed on a lot of the think tank that we, we had the last couple days. So, I just wanted to, I was just curious to get a feel of how many of you, is this your first time in City Hall? Primera vez aquí en el Consejo Municipal. Primera vez. Levanta la mano alta. Muchas gracias por estar aquí y levantar su voz. Es muy importante que, que estén parte del proceso. Entonces, por favor, continúen levantando la voz, pero también conectense para que agarren la información. Mandamos cada mes lo que está pasando aquí en nuestra bella ciudad de Santa Paula. So, again, please sign up for our newsletter, go to our website, our social media, our Facebook, our Instagram, and stay connected, because this is what democracy is supposed to look like. So, thank you so much. Alright, so we're gonna move on to the...
Mayor, before you move on, if you don't mind, and I appreciate your translating, we have a lot of people here tonight speaking Spanish and listening in Spanish, and we did not have enough headphones. If you can let them know that we do in the future, hope to have more, so when we have these large crowds, everyone can be included. And when they do leave, because they're going to be leaving soon, if they can just drop those off here at the corner of my desk.
Queremos informarle a todo el público que la ciudad no tenía suficientes, no, para trasladar lo que estamos diciendo, pero ya ordenamos más porque ya sabemos que tenemos que estar conectados con comunidad y que nosotros somos accesibles a ustedes. Entonces, en el futuro va a haber más del, del equipo necesario para, para comunicarme, comunicarnos mejor. Muchas gracias por su paciencia.
Thank you, mayor. Would just like to inform those who are here that have not been, and to the public, that the entire city council speaks Spanish. So, whether there's translations or not, we do hear your voice, but we do also want the public to know what's being said. So, it's important that it be translated, and I'll say it in Spanish. Quiero informarles a todos que todo el consilio de su ciudad habla español, bilingüe. Entonces, cuando hablan ustedes entendemos todo. Pero como un servicio a toda la comunidad, estamos traduciendo para que se entiendan todos los que están, perdón, escuchando por radio o por el internet or por televisión. Gracias.
Si tienen un parte del equipo y salen del, no se le llaman a la casa, por favor, okay? Any other comments for council members? No, we're good. Okay, we're moving on to item seven, presentations. Thank you so much for waiting. We have the Santa Paula Creek FEMA blood map revision. This is really exciting and important. So, who's gonna be the staff member on this one?
Our city engineer.
Oh, our city, oh, there you are. Sorry, I'm looking for you over there.
Good evening, Mayor Chavez, members of council. I'm Bob Woodward, city engineer, and I'm joined tonight by Adrian Montez. Adrian is one of our permit engineers who will be assisting with any questions we have afterwards.
We're gonna just give a minute to the residents for, for coming on the topic and speaking. And then we'll go on and talk about the FEMA map. Gracias. I should have opened the back door. Gracias. Hasta luego. Gracias. So they don't shoot me. Okay, we're all set. Thank you so much. Appreciate everyone's patience on this one. It's positive news, so we're looking forward to hearing about this. Thank you, Mister Woodward.
Thank you, Mayor Chavez, and looking forward to bringing some good news tonight. As a, as a point of order, we had hoped for FEMA to be able to join us tonight as well. We're having some technological issues that may prevent them from joining. What we will do, both Mister Montez and I will be available after the meeting, after the presentation. We'll adjourn outside. We have a table set up, and we'll be able to provide detailed information to anyone with questions who's here in the audience. So, that'll hopefully address any questions people have as they've shown up tonight. What we'd like to do is provide a general overview to the map changes, just for general information. And then, as I said, we'll adjourn afterwards to address specific questions of people that have come up tonight. We may be having some more technological issues. One moment.
So, for folks that don't know, FEMA is Federal Emergency Management Agency. It's a government agency that sets certain standards for flood control, or, and that triggers insurance for local homeowners and communities. And so, we're gonna be going over some map revisions.
So, with that, we'll move along to the first slide. As an agenda, we're gonna talk about, one, the reasons for the change, and then a summary of the affected properties that are affected by the change, an overview citywide of the changes, and then some details of areas of change that are of interest to homeowners. We'll also address kind of the next steps in this process, as well as further action that can be taken. Next slide. Why the change? There were changes made to the hundred-year flows. That is, those are the flood flows that come from Santa Paula Creek. Santa Paula Creek is the flooding source for the properties affected by this change. This was actually a case where the flows were decreased from the Santa Paula Creek watershed. That allowed for a lot of the flows that were formerly thought to be escaping the creek from as far up as the Headworks, which is up near Cliff Drive, all the way down to the 126 freeway. So, the changes clarify the areas that are actually affected by flooding, as well as correcting flood designations that may have been in error or have been corrected by the remapping. So, that's kind of where the good news comes in. Next slide, please. So, as far as a summary of the changes, we have people going from what's called a special flood hazard area, A-99, to what's known as a Zone X. Zone X is an area of minimal flooding. That's less than 12 inches of flooding. That's not considered a special flood hazard area typically by insurance companies, and typically you're not required to have flood insurance in Zone Xs. So, where you've got the change from an A-99 to a Zone X, that's a good change. You're out of the special flood hazard area, and that's 1,079 property owners. The Zone X to AE Zone, these are people that are being brought into the special flood hazard area, so they're gonna be new to the flood zone. There are 44 property owners that are gonna be added to the flood zone. We also have people that are getting better defined in terms of their flood risk. That's basically a mapping of the flood elevations relative to their property, where there was no mapping before. So, where we do have issues with flooding, we've got better information as far as what that flood risk is, as well as the depth of water that they're subjected to. And we've got a significant number of people that are essentially not changed. They're in the area of influence of Santa Paula Creek, but they're experiencing no change, and that's the majority of those. Next slide. As an overview of the changes, this map was prepared by FEMA, and essentially it shows the, the area of, of effects of these changes. The pink area is essentially decreases in flood risk. That's where people are primarily being removed from the special flood hazard area, from the flood zone. The areas in yellow are being added. Their, their flood risk increases. So, as the mapping's been done, the modeling has been done of where the flood water is, it's been determined that there's actually some properties that, that are affected that were not before. And then the areas in blue are essentially being better defined. These are areas predominantly south of Main Street, between Main Street and the SR-126 or the freeway, who have always been in a flood zone, most of them, but they're being better defined. So, there are some areas in pink where people are being removed, but there's also some better definition there as well. Next slide. As far as some details, this is the eastern limits of the city. This is from approximately Highway 150 or Ojai Road to East Area 1, which is to the east of Santa Paula Creek. Those areas that are shown in tan are areas primarily that used to be flood hazard areas that have now been removed. So, where you see tan areas, those are what are called Zone X, which is an area of minimal flooding. As you can see, the blue is confined to Santa Paula Creek. That means the flood water is actually contained in the creek, all the way down to an area just, just south of Main Street, where it backs up at the freeway and it essentially affects the properties along Harvard Boulevard, heading up towards Main Street. Next slide. When we compare the two, the image on the left is the, the current, what we call the current effective. So, that's the flood map that's in effect right now. The proposed is what it will be come May 15th. So, you can see where the blue is changing to tan. Those are pretty vast areas that are being removed from the flood zone. The areas down closer to the freeway, where you can see the little black squiggly lines, those areas are actually being better defined. So, in other words, we know a little more about what the water's doing and how deep it is. Next slide. The western limits are primarily Steckel and to the east. So, fairly broad swath, all the way over to Fagan Canyon and Steckel are the limits of the changes. And again, primarily south of Main Street is the area of fact. Next slide. This is a comparison of the same area. So, when you look at the changes, the main changes are the blue areas on the left, which are your current flood map, have been better defined. Again, the black squiggles are what we call flood elevations or contours. Those tell you what the water depth is. So, there's a better understanding of what that flood depth is for your property. Next slide. Just a little bit of a detail. This is actually down at the, at the end of Fagan Canyon Creek. This is along Santa Clara River. Santa Clara River is the kind of red and blue hatched flood area. There's been about three flood map changes recently to this area. We had some recent map changes to the Santa Clara River that affected some properties bordering the river. A more recent one, which is noted here, which is relative to the Santa Maria Industrial Park. And then finally, the most current map change, which is also shown here. Next slide. So, next steps, these current flood maps are gonna go effective on May 15th. So, we've got a couple more months. Those that are new to the special flood hazard area, again, about the 44 property owners, FEMA does have, through the insurance companies, a newly mapped discount. So, properties that are newly mapped do have a discount to the premium that they'd be looking to pay. And there's also limits to the premium increases each year. I believe it's 18% per year until you get a certain maximum, which is the actual premium that you pay for your property. So, they kind of ease you into this. But again, your insurance company can provide you a little more information. And FEMA's also given us some contacts that you can use to gather more specific information on, on what you need to do. For those that are out of the special flood hazard area, you may be looking at a reduction or removal of flood insurance requirements. Ultimately, that's not a decision of the city. That's a decision of your lender. So, if you have a federally backed mortgage, that would be a decision of your lender as to what that reduction is gonna be. But start looking for that after May 15th of this year. Next slide. A little bit of information for further action. If you are in a flood plain, FEMA does have some guidance for how you can make some improvements to reduce your flood risk. They actually have a manual here that talks about how you can take steps to or reduce your flood risk, floodproofing options, what have you. It's a fairly good document. We have it here. We'll also post it on the city's website. The other option too, is you can apply for a letter of map change. The other option, too, is you can apply for a letter of map change. The link here also has a, has some good guidance. There's a tutorial online for how you can file a request for a letter of map change. The reason for this is when FEMA does the community-wide mapping, they often do it with some fairly broad brushes. So it may be that your house or your location locally is at a high spot that maybe shouldn't be affected as much by the floodwater. It gives you the ability, as a property owner, to independently have FEMA make a decision about your actual flood risk. So there's some options there, too, in terms of letters of map change. But FEMA has some good guidance on how you can take some independent action on that. And again, we'll be available after the meeting. We can, we can take anyone's questions outside. But that really concludes our presentation tonight, and we'll take any questions that council members may have.
Did we have any public comment on this item? I'll, I'll hold my questions until we have.
Good evening. So a couple of questions about the map that I have had concerns about regarding the city's property that's located in the map, and the county's property with regards to the wall structures of the drainage and the channelways like Fagan Canyon that's been pointed out. I know there's a Clomar process for property owners to raise the elevation or change the elevation, but is there such a process for the city and for other public agencies? Because if the property owners have to raise their property, then the city would have to raise their property as well. So I'm just wondering where, what the correlation is.
Can we see that?
Yeah, the, some of the details on the mapping, we can, we can review if you'd like after, after the meeting. There's some, some specifics to some of their changes, as well as some of the modeling changes that FEMA has made.
Well, back in the day with that piece of property, there was a reventment wall that was put in there. It was approved through the county and the city to protect the sewer plant downstream. So the elevation in the previous maps was below that reventment wall. This new map shows above the reventment wall. So the sewer plant's still there, but now there's no protection. What do we do?
Can we take this one off? Yeah? For council members? Something very specific that they're probably going to have to do some research on to find out what's been previously and so on. Can you please provide your information?
I'm with Eric King. Yeah.
And Mr. Woodward will be available as soon as we're done to be out in the hallway to, to talk with residents.
And then if you can get a phone number, a contact number for that one. And then Councilwoman Crossway, you were going to ask a question.
Well, I do have a question about their comment. Are they talking about the sewer plant, or which city property are they specifically referring to? Do we know? If not, is that something that we can look into to see if?
Were you asking me?
Well, I'm just wondering.
I think the question that was posed by Mr. King was if it's good for the goose, it's good for the gander. So for instance, equity, are we, is a city required if it has properties to adhere to FEMA policy as well as compared to residents? And I guess that's an issue of equity.
And was there a specific city facility you were talking about?
Well, like I said, originally, the reventment wall was put in to protect the city sewer plant downstream. So now that they've raised this, do we need to have the city approve us to go back and raise the reventment wall to protect that property and protect the sewer plant downstream?
I think that's something that we should look into, whether or not they just didn't take that wall into consideration when they did their map, or whether there's some changes that need to be made to that wall. So that would, so just based on the public comment, I just think that that's something that we need to follow up with and, and confirm. So thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Thank you, sir.
And then, oh, what was my other question? Now that we've gone down that rabbit hole. Oh, so for the properties then that aren't in the blue area, I know that one thing that I've heard from a lot of people was they were having troubles with they wanted to do an ADU for their mother, and, but they were having problems because of the flooding zones. So if they're not in the blue, does that make it, does that get rid of that requirement to do a flood study in order to put that in? Or where, how does, how will this impact that?
Yeah, if they're, if they're not in the blue area, they don't technically have to do an elevation certificate or do other types of measures specifically to floodproofing or mitigation. The areas that are in tan do have the potential for up to 12 inches of flooding. So depending on the topography of your lot, there may be a need to take a look at that from a drainage perspective, but there'd be no special measures that the city would require relative to FEMA for those properties.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I just would like to point out and acknowledge all the work that the department did in order to prepare and communicate with FEMA in order to get this done. It's, it's a huge economic impact in our city to have that. In a slightly earlier life, I was on a loan committee for a community bank here, and getting loans processed were often delayed and sometimes deal breakers on getting the flood insurance and the flood documentation in order to close loans and deals. And so this is huge for purchases and sales of commercial and private property. And I just am really appreciative of our city and the department for all the work that went into it to assist FEMA in a huge change in the maps for our city. And it will have an economic impact, and I just wanted to appreciate that. And, and also for the city to know the work that was done in order to help the economic standards in our city.
Would you mind going to the slide that shows the impact on the number of properties? For me, please, to the Councilwoman's point?
Yeah, go back to it. It's about slide number three. There you go.
You measure the impact to our property owners, for instance, that are going to be out of the zone. So that's 1,079 property owners that potentially are going to have a removal of flood insurance. And that impacts their bottom line. And so can you just share with us briefly to the point that was just made? The initiation of the process to do all this came from the city, came from the feds? It was a partnership of both?
This was a little bit of both. The, the change was actually initiated by the East Area 1 project because the flooding affected their development parcels. So as they looked to better map their areas, they went back and they looked at some of the watershed conditions and the hydrology. So in a way, there was an incidental benefit to the city from the study that was done by East Area 1 engineers. This process has been going on with FEMA for about four years now. So this has been a, really a, quite a, quite a piece of work, and we appreciate all the work of, of Mr. Laletta and his engineers with the East Area 1, because there, there is dramatic benefit to the folks who are to the west of Santa Paula Creek, which we certainly appreciate. FEMA's been hugely supportive in this as well, particularly as the changes required them to go back and look at some of the flows in Santa Paula Creek, which has been a source of controversy for some time, ever since there were issues with the decertifying of the levees some years back. So this essentially reestablishes that the levees do contain the floodwaters for the majority of their length, which is a great boon to, to property owners. There'll be some ongoing study that's done, which you all have been hearing about. Our process has been to let some of the other flood studies get completed, so that then the city can benefit from those changes, and then staff can more properly focus on the areas that still need to be studied further.
Great, thank you for that. Any other questions, council members, before we move on to the next presentation? Thank you, Mr. Woodward, for your hard work. Appreciate it. All right, so we have a guest today. Please join us, Linda. And we're going to, if you can introduce yourself, and welcome to Santa Paula. I know you're making, making the rounds all across the county, and we appreciate you making the time to be here with us.
Well, I appreciate you all having the opportunity to make a presentation. Okay. No problem. Wait, there we go. Thank you. I'm sorry, of course, now I get a coughing attack. Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, city manager, my name is Linda Braun-Trager. I'm the CEO for the Housing Trust Fund Ventura County, as well as the Housing Land Trust Ventura County. And I'm here tonight. What's going on with the allergies? Sorry. I'm here tonight to just share a little bit for new council members about how, who the Housing Trust Fund is and how we got started, as well to make an ask at the end. But first of all, I want to thank, we have two board members from the city of Santa Paula that work in Santa Paula. Of course, we all know Mary Ann, who's one of our founding board members, and Eleanor Vaughn from the Santa Paula Housing Authority has joined the board a couple of years ago, and she's vice chair for the next two years. So we appreciate their input on behalf of Santa Paula. The Housing Trust Fund was created in 2008, and we became a nonprofit in 2000. You can move on to the next one. You don't need to see me. We were, we received our nonprofit status in 2011 and began lending in 2013. And we were recreated as a short-term lender to help support the needs of affordable housing developments. As many of you know, it's always a challenge to find the funding, particularly in the early phases of affordable housing. And so that's the role that we are playing. We are considered a nonprofit bank, a community development financial institution. And over the years, we got started with a $2 million match from the state of California and have grown that to over $50 million in funding that we've raised throughout the community. In addition, we created in 2020 the Housing Land Trust, which goal is to preserve land for affordable housing in perpetuity going forward. So developers receive a ground lease on the land in order to ensure that the communities have an asset of affordable housing in perpetuity. We have a property in the city of Oxnard and a property in the city of Thousand Oaks, and are working with a couple of other cities with some potential opportunities there as well. We did receive a $5 million REAP, if you're familiar with REAP II grants. These were federal, okay, you all know. Great. We did receive a $5 million grant, which about $300,000 to $400,000 of that will go to the land trust to help build capacity and get programs and get a staff person there. The rest of it will go to the Housing Trust Fund, who's using it for a special, what we call Receipts residual program, which will allow developers to receive a tax credit allocation of a bonus point. So you'll be hearing more about that as we go forward. So our products, we do pre-development loans, acquisition of land, pre-development construction loans, and then bridge and gap has been a common thing as well, most recently because of construction costs going up, as well as other costs going up. It shows there the Prop 1 match. Initially, it was a $2 million match, but in 2018, the voters passed Proposition 1 that is a $25 million match. The last year, unfortunately, was last year, we applied, we are still waiting. We hear we got a very high score, so we should hopefully be somewhere in the $4 to $5 million range with that. And we have already received from the state of California $14 million, of which we have matched. So very, very excited about that opportunity. The next one, please. So as I said, we have done, as of the end of last year, $41.8 million in loans, our commitments since our 2013 start. And to show the volume increase, just last year, we did $14 million. And this year, with the first six months, we're looking at somewhere between $15 and $17 million, just the first six months. As you all know, demand is tremendous, and there've been a tremendous amount of cuts throughout state and federal budgets, and so they are looking to us. Go on to the next one. And by the way, I did provide each of you a copy of our annual report, so I know you will thoroughly enjoy reading that. So at the end of '24, all of those loans created 1,780 affordable housing units. We predominantly do multifamily. However, we have funded a couple of construction in the Habitat for Humanity format. So Fio One in Oxnard, One in Camarillo. And again, as of '24, we had raised $44 million. We're currently at $50 million there. And you can see some of our priorities, the populations, that we encourage developers to fund. Next one, please. So I did mention the $5 million grant for REAP, which was very exciting. And a little bit about our Prop 1 funding and how that works is the state will match our loans. So if we do a $5 million loan, the state would match it at two and a half, and then we would do two and a half. But the best part is, when that loan pays off, the entire $5 million goes to the trust fund to put back out again. And so it is a revolving loan fund, and that's the value of what we do, is the money goes in and out multiple times. We get investors from banks, corporations, individuals, and we leverage for every dollar of government funding, $8 in public, excuse me, in private foundation support. And so it's, it's a great tool to leverage the public and private partnerships. As you can see, the 4.25 in community impact, that is mostly from banks and foundations who have loaned us at below-market interest rates, funding to use for lending capital. Can move to the next one. Now, this is the best part. The Housing Trust Fund, since our inception, has put into the city of Santa Paula, just our loans, $3.3 million into five separate projects, which you can see here. And just this year, we invested in Topa Vista Via. And last year, here in Santa Paula, we did the Citrus Flats. So some of these other ones were early on, and were smaller loans, but just as important, they were smaller, five units, seven units. Now we're into the bigger units. All right, next. And so since our inception, the city of Santa Paula has been a tremendous partner for us, investing into, we say investing because we feel it's an investment, but it's a grant, into the Housing Trust Fund over 200,000, 200,000 between 2012 and 2015, and then again, 250,000 over 2018 and '22. We are currently asking for a multi-year investment of $100,000 for '25, '26, and then '26, '27. And that will be going to your Affordable Housing, I'm sure I get the name right. I think it's called Affordable Housing Trust Fund Committee. Thank you, sorry. To have them consider it, and then they would come back to you as a council to ask for whatever they decide to do. So we just want to thank you again for your longstanding partnership. We always love working in the city of Santa Paula. And as you can see, we've done quite a few projects, probably one of the largest, not the largest, but one of the largest cities to receive our funding throughout the county. And we do fund in all 10 cities and receive support from all 10 cities and the county. I think that is it, but I'm happy to answer any questions or thoughts.
Any questions from our council members? Ms. Krausy, is there anything you'd like to say? Wonderful. Councilwoman.
Wonderful. Councilwoman.
Just a comment. Just thank you all for the work that you do and the impact that you make on our community, and also for your advocacy on behalf of the REAP 2.0. There was lots of impacts for our county and also around the state, so thank you.
We had fun crossing back and forth in Sacramento, so.
I just want to echo that and say thank you, and I am glad that you came to present so that I can learn about the work that you've done, and I look forward to more.
Great. If you have any questions, feel free to reach out.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. So next up on the agenda, we got city council reports. Let's start with Councilwoman Crosswhite.
All right. A lot of what's been happening has been community events since our last meeting. We had a great Arbor and Earth Day celebration that a lot of us enjoyed. We got to plant some trees, and then there were lots of great community activities and resources. I also attended the Woman of the Year Celebration that our Senator Monique Limon put on. We had one of the, she doesn't live here, but her mother lives here, one of the awardees was Maria Munkia's daughter. And so that was fun to see some folks. And then also, Justin, who is the head of the library, his wife got her award, an award for her work with Gold Coast Transit District. So there was some connection to Santa Paula. There was also, I attended two different business roundtable events, one on Flight 126 for the Harvard Boulevard Focus Businesses, and then the regular Chamber Mixer, where they all gave input towards ideas to work towards our strategic plan. I had a Clean Power Alliance Executive Committee meeting. I want to thank my colleagues for your support in my reelection as the Southern California Association of Governments Representative of District 47, which is Santa Paula, Ojai, Fillmore, and Ventura. So thank you all for your support on that. And then we all attended, just so the public knows, we attended strategic planning for the last two days, all day Monday and last night. So it has already been a busy week before arriving at tonight's meeting. So thank you to all my colleagues for the great conversations, and the members of the public who showed up to give public comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Corningh.
Thank you, Mayor. Attended many of the similar things that Councilmember Crosswhite attended. We did go to the city employee birthday anniversary celebration that they themed "Luck of the Irish" that was held at Flight 126. And it's always great to connect with the employees of the city and wish them well and congratulate them. So I think it's a great custom. And again, it was an honor to vote for Councilmember Crosswhite as the representative for SCAG. And she represents us well and always comments, public comments of her colleagues on these boards. She's very highly respected, and we are well represented by her. On the 26th, we attended the K-9 fundraiser. It was the Policeman K-9 Foundation fundraiser at Cosina 1912. As your representative for the Ventura Regional Sanitation District, I got a tour of the Toll and Road landfill, which is fascinating, interesting, and learned a lot. And it's just an amazing place to see all that goes on up there, on behalf of the whole region. The 29th, planted trees and celebrated with the city's celebration for Arbor Day, and then went home and planted six more plants at my house, just to emphasize that. And again, strategic planning, a lot of strategic planning. I think we're building on a really great system that was developed four years ago to turn to two-year strategic planning, coinciding with budgeting. And it really gives us a chance with a facilitator to really think long and hard amongst ourselves and discuss what our priorities are. And I think we just get better at it. And I think, I look forward to what comes out of these sessions that we've been having for the city. Thanks.
Thank you, followed by Councilwoman Ornella.
Congratulations to Councilmember Crosswhite again. I'm glad that I was able to make that meeting and vote for her as well. I don't know why I'm drawing a blank. I attended the strategic planning meeting last night. I was unable to make Monday because I had work. I was not able to attend Arbor Day. I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're followed by Vice Mayor Juarez.
Thank you, Mayor. Thursday, the 20th, I attended, as Councilmember Corningh said, the city's birthday and anniversaries. It's always great to acknowledge our employees on their anniversaries and birthdays. I also attended virtually the elections of Councilmember Jenny, always there, Crosswhite. Welcome to voting for her, and I was honored to vote for her. Thursday, the 27th, there was a business roundtable at the Glen Tavern. I only attended that one, but they are well-attended, and I encourage any business owners in town and their nonprofits to attend. The 29th was Arbor Day Celebration at Teague Park with the planting of trees. And on Monday, there was, other councilmembers attended the all-day strategic planning at Flight 126. And of course, last night, we were at the community center from 5 to 9 on that same issue. That's my report. Oh, and also tomorrow, as every first Thursday of the month is Senior Advisory Committee, and we are short one person, and I know they're actively taking applications for interviews soon, and so I encourage seniors to put in their application for the Senior Advisory Committee.
Thank you. All right. So it's been back-to-back running around. Last week, Ms. Rojas and I were in DC. And for those of you who don't know, it was like coming back home, because I lived there for three years. And, you know, going, and it's a proud moment when you're coming back and you're able to say you're the mayor of a city. We were able to make some good connections, and I do want to, again, state the importance of advocacy and having representation at the federal level. I mean, because of that lobbying efforts that we made at the city, no matter who the mayor was, we were all, it's important for us as a city, as a council, to bring in revenue sources. And the Mesa Tanks that we were able to get funding from, Julia Brownlee's allocation process, with support from other stakeholders, but also Harvard Boulevard. So again, even though there, we had to pivot, we know how to pivot, and we're working with professionals that understand the necessity to continuously work in the process, be seen, so that when our applications come forth, we've done the work. We have a good application, we have the relationships in place, because there's always going to be funding sources coming from other places, including our federal government. We did stay at the Haunted Mansion, which was kind of fun. And we came back, and we had Cesar Chavez Day, we had strategic planning sessions, attended a vigil as well in the evening, the chief and myself were out there, and then some of the police department. We're excited about Cruz Night. We invite the community to come out to Cruz Night. On Friday, your city council has made an investment in that. It's an important signature event for our community, bringing this all together. And again, I just want to say thank you for, to Santa Paula for speaking up, because from what I'm hearing, we have this probably the most we've had in terms of engagement from the public, because we made a concerted effort to communicate and engage with them. So whether it's the surveying that we're collecting, the social media that we're doing, the presentation, strategic planning, the public engagement, all these things are creating a better, a bridge to our community to, we will understand and better meet their needs. So I went with that, and thank you, Santa Paula. Next up, we have City Manager Report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Just a couple of notes. Like many of you, I was at the birthday celebrations, and Arbor Day was my favorite this year because it was also my birthday. So it was nice to see trees planted on that day. I had an opportunity to represent the city and our region last week at the League of Cities Policy Committees. I'm on the Public Safety Committee, talking about legislation and impacts to communities and advocating for our interests. So it's always fascinating to be part of a committee that is, has representation from all up and down the state, and hearing from large and small, and north and south, and coastal and inland. But we all share some of the same common goals. And I just want to thank the council for the commitment to the strategic planning process. You know, staff gets paid to be there. You guys put in well over a dozen hours over these last two days, I think maybe more like 13 or 14 hours. And I just appreciate you guys coming together to help give that united voice to that plan as we finish it off and bring it back to you. We'll, as the mayor suggested, look forward to promoting it in the community, because it will create a roadmap for us for these next two years. So thank you for that. That's all I have.
Great. Thank you, Mrs. Singer. We're moving on to consent calendar. Anybody want to pull anything from the consent calendar? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
May I approve the, I move to approve the consent calendar, items 10A through 10C.
All right, there's a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
All right, there's a second. Any further discussion, comments? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
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 You passed by consensus. All right, moving on to item 11, action item, Utility Rate Assistance Program Report.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to jump in as our most excellent fellow, Mirka Vargas, takes the microphone for the first time and presents to you. Mirka's been working on this topic since it was first brought up by the council two years ago. At the time, we were faced with the effects of COVID, and a lot of families struggling with the ability to pay their water and utility bills. She's done remarkable research on what other municipalities have done in this space, and has a report for you. The expectation tonight is to maybe garner some direction from council, and I'm sure you'll have questions. We have our Finance Director here, Mr. Royas, our Deputy City Manager, and myself, who can also support your questions and the findings that Mirka has come up with.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, City Manager, staff, and members of the public. This evening, I will be reporting on a proposed Utility Rate Assistance Program for low-income wastewater and water customers. Staff is asking that you listen to the presentation tonight and provide any feedback and direction necessary to move forward. Go ahead and click. So for some background, council has expressed an interest in establishing a specialized program aimed at offering financial aid to low-income utility customers. In 2023, as part of council's strategic plan, council approved GOLEF, which included objective number five, water/super bill assistance, exploring resources for connecting low to moderate or fixed income residents with programs to assist with water/super bills. Next one. So taking a look back at previous years, in September 2019, the city, in collaboration with NBS Consultants, conducted a water and super rate study. The study included a comparison of monthly bills under the city's then-current rates and selected rate alternatives. The analysis found that the average wastewater bill in Santa Paula was $89.31, placing the city among the higher-cost communities at that time. A water rate comparison conducted by the city of Thousand Oaks in 2023 demonstrated the following average cost per family. The city showed an average monthly water rate of $120.40, exceeded only by the city of Port Minimi within Ventura County, demonstrating that Santa Paula customers pay a higher-than-average amount to receive water. Next slide, please. In 2021, Ventura County was allocated federal funds by the state of California to help low-income households with their water and wastewater bills. The Low-Income Household Water Assistance Program provided one-time payments to eligible low-income households to help with their water and wastewater bills. Initially qualified households could reduce their bills by up to $2,000, but towards the end of the program, the state provided extra funding directly to residents due to surplus funds. And as a result, the maximum assistance amount was raised from $2,000 to $15,000. The program in our county proved to be incredibly beneficial to Santa Paula residents. And in March, when staff reached out to the Community Action of Ventura County, a program facilitator, they highlighted that Santa Paula was a city with the second-highest use of funding. Residents received a total of $205,055 directly from the program, with additional funding of over $1.3 million provided directly through the state. However, it is important to note that the program was specific to the COVID-19 pandemic, which may affect the accuracy of assessing long-term needs outside of a pandemic context. Next slide, please. Staff researched several cities in the county who have adopted Utility Rate Assistance Programs in the past few years. To provide examples, should council consider adopting a program to help low-income members of the community? Provided are programs from the cities of Ventura, Camarillo, Oxnard, and Thousand Oaks. The city of Ventura has a water customer assistance program that provides a discount of approximately $11.33 on the monthly water service charge. To qualify, the customer must have proof of enrollment in the CARE or California Alternate Rates for Energy Program with Southern California Edison or Gas. The program is funded by late penalty revenues collected by the city. Ventura directs $75,000 annually from penalties to fund the program, and the program was initially approved in 2014. As of November 2024, there are 332 participants, and the program currently has a capacity of 551 customers per year, and operates on a first-come, first-served basis, with a waitlist established once capacity is full. The city of Camarillo's Senior Citizen Water Bill Assistance offers a discount for water charges for seniors who are considered low-income. To qualify, the customer must be at least 62 years of age, be in a low-income household as determined by federal guidelines, and consume no more than nine units of water per billing cycle. This program is funded by a voter-approved special assessment that received approval in 1997. As of March, there are 17 participants enrolled in the program. The city of Camarillo has experienced lower-than-expected participation, and noted that the program's stringent requirements may limit participation. The city of Oxnard's Utility Rate Assistance Program, called Project Assist, offers a $25 discount on the monthly utility bill service charges. Customers who are currently participating in the California Edison or Gas Care Program are eligible. The program is also funded by late penalty revenues. For fiscal year 2023 to '24, $241,500 from late penalty revenues were allocated. In November 2024, the program reported 814 participants with a capacity of 850 customers per year. The program also operates on a first-come, first-served basis, with a waitlist established once capacity is full. The program was initially approved in 2017, and the city of Oxnard shares that fiscal year 2023 to '24 has been the most challenging year yet, with a record number of residents seeking to participate in the program. The city of Thousand Oaks' Utility Assistance Program offers monthly discounts of $10 on water bills and $5 on wastewater bills. To qualify, you must be participating in the CARE program. The program is funded by late penalty revenue with an annual budget of $100,000 for water and $100,000 for wastewater, with each fund managed separately, and residents may be enrolled in either one or both programs. In March, staff reported that there were 358 customers enrolled in the water credit and 276 customers receiving the wastewater credit. The program currently has a capacity of 800 water customers and 1,600 wastewater customers per year. The program was initially approved in 2017, and also operates on a first-come, first-served basis, with a waitlist established once capacity is full. The city of Thousand Oaks is currently utilizing only 40% of the program's participant capacity. Next slide, please. So the analysis of other cities shows that funding sources for assistance programs vary, including penalty fees and voter-approved assessments. Water bill and wastewater assistance may be offered as separate programs, allowing individuals to either participate in one or both. And additionally, these programs maybe operate on a first-come, first-served basis and may have participant capacities. Next slide, please. Staff researched the forefollowing avenues to fund and operate a Utility Rate Assistance Program for low-income members, low-income customers, excuse me, including using penalty revenues. In 2024, Santa Paula collected approximately $402,000 to $552,000 from penalty fees. A portion of these revenues could be allocated to fund the of these revenues could be allocated to fund the Utility Rate Assistance Program, either as a pilot program or an ongoing initiative. This approach would require annual review to ensure funding remains aligned with collected penalties. Second choice would be dedicating a portion of the general fund, which, which would provide structured funding but may fluctuate yearly. Only unrestricted funds could be used to avoid conflicts with existing allocations, such as AB 939 funds. This option would require city council approval during the annual budget process. Next slide, please. Next, customers could voluntarily round up their bills or make one-time or reoccurring donations. Funds would then be placed in a designated account solely for the use of the Utility Rate Assistance Program. While the city's billing system can support this option at no cost, staff would need to manage tax disclosures and monitor fund solvency. And lastly, partnering with community organizations and national agencies could provide grant funding or direct contributions. This approach would require staff to actively seek, manage, and allocate donations. However, it remains unclear whether such efforts could be charged against the utility enterprise funds or would need to be supported by the general fund. Next slide, please. So, in conclusion, staff seeks direction from the council to either authorize further research into potential funding sources for a utility rate assistance program or decide not to proceed with the development of one. And that completes the end of my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions that council may have. Thank you.
First hand up. First of all, Ms. Vargas, thank you very much for a great presentation, very well-done, well-researched and presented. I do recall a couple of years ago, when we expressed the interest in our strategic plan and all, we were coming out of COVID, and we were in the middle of these programs. And I distinctly remember that that was when Mayor Chavez came into council, and he, along with many other volunteers, kind of commandeered a group of people to help our city take advantage of the available funds that came from the state. Now, we're in the dilemma that now we still recognize that there are still people who are unable to pay, or it's difficult to pay. So, we have economic issues for that and, which is clear by the penalties. So, those penalties, as I understand, go into our general fund. So, however we, should we decide to move ahead with something that is taking an allocation that would go elsewhere, so we'd have to figure out, are we taking it away from some, one thing? So, would those funds benefit? So, long-winded, because I've thought about this a lot. I'm concerned by looking at the other city programs, thinking about the cost to administer those programs for the results that they're getting. I, I don't know if that's the way to go, but I still would like to find ways, and, and this brings it to our attention, the need, the numbers, the people, how we could assist. And I'm wondering if there are simpler ways to do so. So, that's something I might be open to discussion, you know, with, with my fellow council members as we budget. Could it just, instead of administering something a little more complicated in qualifying and paperwork and all, to maybe consider just a flat discount or waiving of the first penalty or something like that. I, it's just, you know, that's, it's not anything I'm proposing as specific, but just to open the discussion that there may be options that are less onerous as far as administration.
And Ms. Director Ramirez is coming up, and she knows the inside and out of the process and staff time. Could you share a little insight?
Yes, and, and Merka can answer that too, because she was prepared for that question. I just wanted to clarify a couple of things, and I'm sitting on this side, so Merka can shine. This is all, all her, her credit. A couple of things. One is that penalties are, do not go back to the general fund. They stay within the water funds. So, that being said, not all penalties that are assessed are collected. So, one of the things that Merka has verified with other cities is that they don't utilize the penalties that are being assessed as the funding capacity. Instead, they wait to see what funding has been collected from the prior year, right? Because a lot of times, when you have penalties, people that aren't able to pay their bills, they'll, you know, go into either collections, or it, it won't be, it'll be on the books as revenue, but it won't actually come in as revenue, as cash to be utilized. I was, I started in April 2019, which is around the time that the water rate study was really getting going, so I wasn't a part of that. However, it's my understanding that typically, the penalties wouldn't be assessed as part of the rate study, so it would be set aside of funds. However, that said, you know, any surplus that you have in the water fund would then go on to offset any future increases. So, there's still a fiscal impact. It's just not to the general fund. I did want to clarify that.
Thanks for that clarification.
Thank you, Mayor. And great presentation. Thank you. A couple of years ago, when we started discussing this, there was also the concern of gift-to-public funds, and I think you answered it, Director Ramirez, in that it's part of the penalty revenue that we get in the capital investment fund, or capital, capital funds. But, and as I think you, you already answered the question I was going to ask, and that is, where are we going to get the money, and then what happens when we exhaust that money if it's utilized as a program? But you're going to use the revenues from the previous year as kind of a benchmark, correct? And that's what you'll do going forward, so that we don't ever surpass?
That would be the recommendation from staff to council. You never want to utilize funds that you haven't received, especially if they're unrealized.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. So proud of you to have you come to council and present on this topic. You know the face of San Pollo. You know the struggle that people are going through. I like the idea of a pilot program, and that's balanced, right? That, that maybe has certain limitations, that has maybe directly for seniors as a targeted block, um, cap, like a, like a, like a $25 off, or whatever it might be, whatever the council decides on that. But something that, that also allows the community to help itself, for instance, those that can help others. So, this rounding it off, we see it all the time at the stores. What do you round it off? They ring, ring the bell. Thank you so much. I mean, if we do a little bit of everything, then it's a balance approach, so that it's every, the community that can help is helping. We're also using penalty fees. We're also targeting it to maybe the senior population, determine what that looks, what that would look like. Putting limitations, so since it's a pilot program, let's test it out first before, you know, maybe we come up with the number that might work based on the allocation of funds that we've collected from a previous year, like the vice mayor mentioned. But I think it's something positive, especially for our senior population that's dealing with the high cost of everything. And they're on fixed incomes. You know, they don't have the ability to, to go and work and find jobs, and so, or get other streams of income. So, working really to that targeted population of seniors, I think, would be something that I, I would like to recommend that we focus on.
Just a question of clarification. Are you suggesting all seniors, or are you suggesting low-income seniors?
Low-income seniors.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah.
Do we have any sense in terms of staff time, if you limited it to that population? Do we have any sense of order of magnitude of what that would, and if we even have the staff capacity?
So, I can answer the first part. When speaking to the city of Oxnard, they were, they were in great, in the sense that they were very transparent about the challenges they faced, and, but also the successes. And they, they mentioned that really, it's a challenge to start the program. It is. It requires a lot of staff time, just getting everyone enrolled for the very first time, and it's a lot of paperwork. But once you get, once you finish that application part, it's, it's very smooth sailing. From then, it's all automatic billing. And then, if you were to do the pilot program for whether six months to a year, then you would recertify after that. Or you could choose to, it's a pilot program, so it's a little different, but you could choose to either do it annually or every two years. And the city of Oxnard's staff said that it takes about one to two months to recertify all those who are in the program. So, it is a heavy lifting, but after that, it is pretty smooth sailing. Yeah.
So, my question to Finance Director, do we have the staff capacity to add that?
In all honesty, in this moment today, no. As you know, we've had staffing challenges with our, in particular, our accounting specialist for utility billing doing two jobs. We have gotten some temp help to assist, but he still does the quarterly reports because, you know, it's, it's temp help. So, today, no, at a, at full capacity. That, that may change. We're just, we're not fully staffed right now.
So, so could we direct staff to bring this back, once we're full-staffed and they're able to, to support a program like this? And if there is, is time of staff to begin the development of the idea, the, the other debate about it, now, what I'm thinking, that it does stay in the water fund, is that that fund assists the entire city of ratepayers on our future rates. Is that not correct? Or does that have an impact in that way? So, if we were using it for just one program, does that take away from the ability to lower the rates overall in the future for, for the all ratepayers?
Indirectly, if you're taking monies that would otherwise go into the general enterprise account and giving that back just to specific customers, that is going to be less revenue as we approach this next rate cycle that is, that would be available, which means that the rates will increase for all customers.
So, it would just be good to know if we were to use those funds, whatever designated funds that we would estimate on something like that, how much of an impact it would have?
System-wide.
System-wide.
Yeah. We could easily estimate that.
Yeah, I don't need down to the last dollar, but at least a good estimate.
Since we know this is roughly about $400,000, it wouldn't be hard to deduct that in order to see what the impact to the total revenues are as a percent of our water consumption.
Would it be appropriate or legal to fund maybe that position through the enterprise fund?
The staff to support?
To support this project.
So, those positions are funded through the enterprise funds right now. Anything having to do with utility billing are funded through the enterprise funds. Technically, they get split between water and sewer. And we have had, again, internal conversations, as has been previously mentioned, not only, obviously, in regards to this current request that, or presentation that is being put to council, but also with the increased housing that has and will be continuing to grow with Harvard and all of the other developments that have been going on, so.
Well, I just have an ongoing concern with staffing citywide. When will we reach that threshold of being at full staffing? Maybe it would be better to consider if and when we get our budget for the next two years, if there's money to allocate for it. That might be, might be another option. I'm saying.
I counsel up in Crossway, and then, Cornejo.
On the $400,000 figure, is that just late fees, or is that all penalties? That's my first question.
From my understanding, and Kristi, please correct me if I'm wrong, that is just late fees.
So, it's like the other programs. It doesn't include, say, shut-off fees?
So, so.
I only ask because the other cities, it specifically called out that it was late penalty fees, and so I just wanted to make sure that we were comparing the same numbers.
So, I don't, so Merka worked directly with my staff, so I don't know the accuracy of that statement, to be completely honest with you. I know in the past, we averaged $20,000 to $40,000 in late fees, which would be $200,000 to $400,000 per year. Again, during COVID, that was significantly higher. During COVID, we were seeing higher disconnect fees. So, you would probably have less to work with than $400,000.
We're not talking, I would give you not the whole $400,000.
No, I just am trying to understand the, I'm just trying to understand.
Right. So, that said, I can verify, it probably is just penalties. And the reason why I state that is because disconnect fees is not a, it's not a penalty. It's a $40 connect and $40 reconnect for the time that staff is going on and coming back. And that's actually limited per the state SB 98.
Okay. And then, to follow up on that, is the $400,000 the amount that was levied or the amount that was received?
Levied.
Okay. So, it's not necessarily how much of that was received?
Correct.
Okay. So, I think, going forward, it would be helpful if we decide to continue to talk about this, if we know, it would, one, like, how much money did we receive last year? And then, if we were going to do something like the, oh, the thing on the, the roundup on the utility bill, how long would it be until we're able to upgrade the system? Because it says that there's a cost to upgrade the system, but we, our current way that our bill is configured wouldn't allow for that addition. So, like, what, how much time would that take? You know, an estimate of the staff time, knowing that we wouldn't be able to implement it until we had staff to implement it. So, I think there's a lot of pieces that we need, would need, I mean, I think we all agree, we would love to do something for our, our customers. That's been something that we've talked about for a really long time. I also think we have a lot of pieces that we need to figure out how, what that would look like, and, you know, what would be the feasibility of having some sort of a pilot, recognizing that today, we couldn't start tomorrow.
Yeah.
Because we have a lot of pieces.
When you do a shift in rate, in rates, you do it at the start of the year. So, it sounds like we want to proceed with something to give you more time to staff up, maybe put together a plan of what that would look like to bring back at a later date this year. And if we decide to move forward, then the pilot program would effectively go into effect January of '26. That gives you sufficient time, because you don't want to do it in the middle of a year. Just, it's just not. And also have a cap, right? It could be, it could be, if you have an amount like $100,000 and first-come, first-serve, and then we pilot it out, and then we, we reassess in two years, for instance. But not do it now. I wouldn't propose doing something like that now, because we do have budget, strategic planning, staff, systems. So, something that we're highly interested in, but we wanted to continue doing some work to, to create more of a plan that might be feasible when we have the resources. Does that make sense?
Yeah. And making sure that we weren't negative, negatively impacting the rest of the ratepayers in order to offset the program, because technically, you're not supposed to do that. But there, you know, and so just making sure that it's all, everything is balanced.
Sure.
And, and that we make sure that even though it's not included in the rate study, that just that we, right. So, I, I think it would be important for us to understand how much of an impact that would have, so that we're making a completely informed decision and not just a compassionate one, right? Because we all want to make the compassionate decision. But I think we just, we want to, we want to understand the order of magnitude of everything that it impacts. And it would be interesting to know from those cities that implemented it, if there, if they saw from when they started to when the full program was fully implemented, if they saw a reduction in those penalty fees, right? Like, if they used to get 400 and now they get 200, or, you know, because I think that would also show that the program was working to keep people from being late. So, I just would be interested to know if there was any change in impact to those fees.
And the roundup too, because that's an opportunity for the, those that can give, and that can balance out a little bit.
You know, the catch 22 with that, spoke to Mr. Singer today, is if some of the people that are being affected by the shut-offs are the people that can't afford it, we help them, and then they're not getting shut off anymore. So, now your penalty fund is decreasing, you know, then you're losing the money that you're, you're generating because people are on time. So, then what happens in the future when they don't get that assistance and the funds, and the rates go up? You know, do we find some other source for assistance? Maybe like, say, the roundup of the, of the other customers might help.
I think that's called being a victim of your own success, right?
Yeah.
Although, the, the flip side of that is that you're, part of what they're paying for is the staff time to go out there, shut it off, turn it back on. So, that also frees up that staff time to work on other projects directly related to, you know, fixing water lines or other things. So, there is a little bit of a, an offset there.
Last one.
Yeah, just one quick question. When is the rate study? I know that's not one that was part of the report or to be prepared for, but I'm just wondering.
You can come to the podium, Dale.
So, the rate study right now.
Come to the podium.
The mic.
So, they can see you on TV.
There you go. Thanks.
So, the, the rate study is currently on hold while we get the, the budget and the strategic plan done. I put out an invitation to kick off the rate study, do a, a new kickoff for the rate study, and I only had one positive. And I only had one positive response. And so I thought, okay, we need to, if, if nobody is available to do this right now, we need to wait a few weeks until we get a, can draw a breath, and then, and then do the, get the rate study going. So I would anticipate that sometime in May, we'll be doing, we'll be kicking that off, probably in early May. And hopefully, before the end of the fiscal year, we'll, won't be done. But we'll, we'll know kind of what direction things are going. And early, early in the next fiscal year, we'll, we'll have that completed. That's kind of what I, I think is going to happen.
So that's another piece of the puzzle, budget, rate study, staffing, and then, then we can see really what we can, what we're able to do. So, thank you.
Thank you so much for your hard work. Last comment? Are we okay? All right. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Uh, thank you. I just wanted to clarify one last thing. So is the, the request from council to, to continue researching both penalties and the donation program? Or is it just?
I think all of it.
All of them. Okay, so finding a mixture of all of them. Okay. Okay, thank you so much for the insightful feedback.
Great, thank you very much. All right, we're at the next item, item 11B, request for letter of support for the Harmony Project. Who's doing this one? Jonathan?
Good, good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers, and Mr. Singer. Staff comes before you this evening with a request to review a letter of support for the Harmony Project. This letter came in, this request came in earlier this year in February from the owner of the House of Magic Foundation for the Arts. Staff once received the request for the letter of support. As protocol, looked at the legislative platform from council and assessed whether the project aligned with some of the policies that are within the platform. Staff did find several sections of the legislative platform did align with the request for this proposed project. And therefore drafted a letter of support, which was sent to the mayor for approval. The mayor did look at the letter and suggested, along with Mr. Singer, some revisions to the letter to make it a little bit more concise and a little bit more broad. And then upon further conversation regarding the revised letter, which is also included in your packet this evening, it's Exhibit B. A conversation with the mayor was had in terms of bringing this item to council along with the vice mayor for further discussion this evening, which is outlined in your legislative platform, and that's, that's why that policy is in place. So should there be questions as to policy statements and/or issues in your platform? It's within the mayor or vice mayor's purview to bring those items before the full council. And that is why it is on your agenda item this evening. I'm not going to explain a little bit more about the Harmony Project, because Mr. Lantine, who is in charge of that project, is here this evening. So I will give him an opportunity, if you have questions regarding the project, to, to ask those of him. And I'd also be happy to answer any questions as it relates directly to the legislative platform and/or the letters. But I'd invite Mr. Lantine out here if you did have some questions about the project itself. Ah, look at that. Just appears out of, yeah.
Abracadabra.
Bada boom, bada boom.
You're going to see some real magic when you start watching this thing switch. So I, I can control it from here. So anyway, the, the Harmony Project was something that Julie and I had actually envisioned probably back in 2012. And we, we ended up moving to Santa Paula and absolutely fell in love with the city. We were here back in 1999. I worked for a nonprofit software development company, which's office is actually where we now have the House of Magic. But because of the size restraints, we had to limit what we could actually do. And my wife and I, Julie, had said that if there was ever a space that opened up that really kind of suited what it is we would like to, what we envision, then we would actually go after the whole thing. And so the reason why we call it the Harmony Project is it's about bringing collaboration into the city with regards to the arts. We're not looking to basically come in and control all the different art forms, but what we want to do is provide a space where we can work with other community leaders and other community art teachers and instructors to be able to give them an outlet to where they can actually conduct their class, maybe put on showcases of their class. And, and so for us, it, it allows us to expand opportunities to the entire community, because we're not just looking at providing these things in, in a vacuum. We're not looking at these other art centers doing their thing in a vacuum. We're looking at bringing collaboration to where we can all come together and, and reach the city as an entirety. Julie and my mission has always been that the arts should be accessible to anyone who seeks it. Regardless of their financial condition, regardless of their creed, regardless of their ethnicity, the arts should be available to anyone, because it's an important, vital part of a child's development. Yet it's the first thing that the government cuts when it comes to budget cuts. They remove the arts from the school systems, they decrease the funding. And so if any of you know my story, the arts essentially saved my eldest son. He suffered from a disorder, a sensory deprivation. And what it meant was that his senses were heightened, they were overstimulated. So as a baby, we couldn't cuddle him, because it, to him, we were squeezing, squeezing the life out of him. And as he began to grow, and we put him in the school system, what their solution was, was to drug him. And so Julie and I decided that we're going to homeschool, because we're not going to put this kid on medication for the rest of his life. So we did up into his freshman year. And in his freshman year, we enrolled him in high school. And he, he started to make some friends, but the friends started to kind of drop off. And a couple of his close friends were saying, you know, you got to talk to him, because he's like blowing up at us, and he's just flipping out and going crazy. And so in talking to him, he's like, I don't know what they're talking about, Dad. I was in math class, and all of a sudden, now I'm in science. And so he was actually losing time. And so when he got into stressful situations, his brain would shut down. He had no idea what he was doing, how he was reacting, or how he was responding. And in his freshman year, he decided that he was done, he wanted to kill himself. And he called us up to say goodbye. And so we immediately got somebody on the phone with him to help talk him down. And we got him into counseling, and the counselor suggested classical guitar. And so we enrolled him in classical guitar. And all of a sudden, this, this boy, or this kid who cannot function in his body, started to kind of normalize. You could hug him, you could, you know, overnoy, the noise didn't overstimulate him. It was as though classical guitar was reprogramming his brain. And the more he got into it, his grades started to improve, he stopped losing time. And there was a complete dramatic change in this kid's life. And most of you know Joshua, because he does the magic store with me. He's now a magician. He is a father, he just had his first child, they're now pregnant for their second. And he's suffering now from MS. He was just diagnosed a few years ago with MS. But in doing magic with the dexterity and the fine motor skills, it's really helping slow down the progress of MS, because he's, he's keeping his motor skills intact. And so in seeing that, that's when Julie and I decided, this is our mission in life. We are going to bring the arts to our community, which in Santa Paula is such a welcoming community when it comes to the arts. And you guys know how important the arts are and how vital they are to a community. So this, this is our home, this is a good place to be. And what we want to do is get the community center, or the Masonic Temple. And we want to convert it into a 150-seat theater on the second floor. We have a hall, we would have a magic shop, we would have escape rooms. So we'd bring, we'd bring tourism to the city for the downtown. We are partnering right now with the Isabella Projects. We're, we're in discussions with them about doing programs for the Isabella Project during the morning. We do homeschool and after-school programs with Magic and Steam. So to me, it's, it's, the Harmony Project is about bringing harmony amongst the entire population. There's a lot of hate out there, and there's a lot of anger. And what we want to do is help bring the art community together and to help provide them with a space if they need it. If they don't, great. If they already have a home and they're already serving part of the community, awesome. If there's anything we can do to help, that's what it's about. We want to pay it forward. And so that's why we are moving forward with this project. Sorry, long-winded.
Thank you for sharing your story.
Yeah.
Questions from council members?
Not for James, but had we, if my memory serves correctly, didn't we offer a letter of support to Isabella Project?
Uh, Vice Mayor, yes, we did. And that would be a, a good example of a, a letter of support with, you know, non, non-expectation of, of providing funding, but something that, that impacts the entire community.
Yeah, that, that's essentially, you know, one of the questions was asked to me before, as far as, you know, why is this letter important? And the reason why it's important is when a city endorses a project, you're not guaranteeing that the project is going to be a success, you're not guaranteeing or, or making a commitment, a financial commitment to the project. All you're simply saying is that this project aligns with the vision of the city, and we stand behind it, which provides us with a great amount of weight, because that letter carries a lot of weight with, with grant writers or, or grant funding agencies and things of that nature. So it helps in, in a way that it shows these financial funding institutions that this project is worthwhile and that it does closely align with the vision of Santa Paula, and it demonstrates that the city values the arts. And, and so that's why this letter is important to us. Yes?
Thank you. And here's the hard question. Have you discussed this with the other nonprofits that have related types of activities, such as particularly the art museums and the children's art programs there? Do they see what you're doing as enhancing or competing for similar grants and, and donations?
So most of our funding will not come from grants. Once, once we get the program launched and we, we do the renovations to the building, which by the way, we've already entered into a contract for the purchase of the building. What's happening right now is we're going through the investigation stage to make sure that, one, the building's insurable. That, that was the last thing that was on my list, and I'm finding out that so far, we've had four insurance agencies said, no, we won't touch it. So is that building even insurable? Is the cost of renovations, do we, if we have to do the seismic upgrade, that can be a million dollars. So we're investigating right now whether or not we will even proceed with the building. But we still need to go after the grants for the construction and the rebuild and the, the programs and things like that. So even though there's still a question mark in whether or not this building will actually fit, there is no question mark about the Harmony Project. As far as what you're concerned with the other nonprofits, we've, we've talked with a lot of nonprofits. In fact, when we were at the strategic planning meeting, one of the gals from the arts, the Arts Collective, so what is? Yeah, I, I can't say that, I'm sorry. But they were like, oh my gosh, can we have your business card? So we're not trying to perceive, we're, we're not trying to be perceived as a threat. The Santa Paula Theater Center is like overwhelmed with excitement about us moving next door, because they do programs that they, they want to offer programs that they can't offer because of the way their building is constructed and they have plays going on. So they see this as an opportunity where they could put these programs on, but they would be housed by us. We're not a competitive threat when it comes to theater, because they do theater, we do musical theater for kids. And so we're, we're, you know, attacking two different genres as far as what theater is concerned. So we're not trying to put their programs on, they're not trying to put, put our programs on. In fact, when I asked her, she's like, we don't like musical theater. So, so no, I don't think we're perceived as a threat. And I think those of you who know me know that that's not our intention. Our intention is to, is to work. I mean, we, we consider ourselves highly engaged with the city. We try to be as active as we possibly can and help where we can. We've done several free workshops on marketing and website design and social media to other businesses within the city. Our goal is truly to bring value to the city and, and to elevate its community and to attract tourism, which is something that we can do because of the uniqueness of the magic and things of that nature. Awesome. You should put the three-minute timer on.
I, I just, when I think in terms of business plans and, and all of that, you know, you're opening yourselves to all ideas, but I think in the end, you may end up focusing on a couple of niches or needs that aren't already being met by other nonprofits in the city, so that you can create some synergy and, and all rise. That's the theme of today. We've been talking a lot about all rising. So, so I would, I would think, from what I've seen myself, I think the focus on music, theater, and, and musical entertainment and education of children in music is, is huge.
Yeah, and, and our focus, our program focus is on magic, improv, musical theater, film, because we do, we've done several independent films for filmmakers who couldn't get their movies made. And we actually made them for free for those filmmakers. We raised $5,000, $10,000, and we made these films on that budget, because everybody volunteered. And as you know, we started the Santa Paula Film Festival, which was really successful last year. And this year, last year, we had 30, I believe, applicants. This year, we have over 110 right now, the people that have submitted. So, you know, that's, that's where our focus is. What we want to be able to do is for the musician that wants to be able to teach and doesn't have a place to teach, we'll, we'll help support you and bring you in and market your classes with you. That's what we did in Ventura. We, anyone who brought a class into us, we shared in the marketing of that class to help them get the word out and to get students. And that's what we would do here. So if somebody needed a home, we have a home. If somebody needed support in getting the word out, we'll get the word out. So.
I, I think no one doubts your passion for the city and the benefits that you bring to us. I, and in such a project like this, we would want every success. Because I think the community would benefit from something like that. I, I always just have the, the passion and then the practical side that says, okay, how's it going to work? What, you know, where, how, how's it going to go? But I wouldn't, but I would be in favor of, I think, the, the more simple version of the letters. I don't know if you need a motion for that or just continued discussion. I kind of, I don't mean to dominate the conversation, so I'd rather hear what everyone else thinks about it too, but.
You're okay? All right, so I'm actually, I had a chance to meet with James recently. I think that's Friday, no, the Friday before then, right? Oh, oh, sorry. Opportunity to meet with James, and, you know, I, I look at things through a critical eye, because I have a background in nonprofit. My first job was a capital campaign coordinator for the largest gay and lesbian center in the nation. So I understand the magnitude of what's being asked. Especially when it comes to being able to sustain a, a, a building, an operation. It's not just the acquisition, and it's, it's making sure you have operational funds to continue and be successful. And so I did share with James that, you know, I, I look at things with that critical eye, because of my experience and my background. And so one of the things that, that I looked at when I looked at this is what, what's the sustainability plan? How are you going to maintain it? Because part of getting a building, you make an offer, and this is the real estate side of me, you make an offer. offer, it's accepted, then it triggers you to get inspection. Which you mentioned tonight, that there's going to be an inspection to determine all the needs to, including safety issues that could be addressed in that report, that could, based on the study that's presented, could take that to a level that it's astronomical, because of the age of the building, you know, where the building's currently, the status of the current building, in terms of its maintenance and needs for repairs. And so, you know, I want you to be as successful as possible. I understand your why. My concern comes from, one, not moving too prematurely from our end to create an endorsement for something without it coming from the grassroots community. For instance, I mentioned to you, the need to engage the school district, the existing students, the youth, that are going to be able to access your programs. I think it's important for the school district to be a partner there. Councilwoman Cornejo talked about the museums, and their children's programming. We just heard, and I think you were present, when you met the Arte and Cultura group. And one of the things that was mentioned yesterday was, the city made promises of support, ten thousand dollars came out twice, right? So, I look at this from, one, a critical lens, but I also look at it from the, from the sense that there has to be some additional work that needs to get done, so that you're not the only one standing here making this request. Because this, to sustain a project like this, you need community. So, I would, I highly recommend that the school district endorses this, and I've offered to invite you to the two-by-two, so that we can have a proposal, so that it's bought into by the entire, these entities, not only the city government, but the school district, but also from the rest of the collaborative, because you just met some of them yesterday.
Yeah, and I, I totally hear what you're saying, Mayor. The only thing I disagree about is that the endorsement is not a personal, financial, you're not guaranteeing the project, you're not committing to the project. You're just simply saying that it aligns with that, the vision that the city has for Santa Paula. And, we work with the school system already. We work with the Boys and Girls Club already. We work with the Santa Paula Theater. We have several downtown businesses that we work with. We are embedded in this community, and I would have no problem getting support from them if I needed that, and I will. But, the whole purpose of the support for us is to be able to show that when we go to grant providers, because we are a small nonprofit, so when we go to grant providers, we need to show that, you know, that the city basically supports this, because it's in line, and it would be beneficial. You're not saying that the program's going to be sustainable, because we don't know yet. I have performance on, on all the programs, but at this point, that's an unknown. So, you know, I, I, I kind of see the statement, I think I see it in a different way, as far as, I'm looking at it as more of a, hey, you know what? This would be a great project, that's going to align with the Isabella Project, which I will have their endorsement. I have Kelly Long's endorsement, I have the Santa Paula Tourism Bureau's endorsement. So, we, we're working fast to move this forward. And I can align with all of those people, and I can get endorsements if that's what is necessary. But, I'm just simply looking for the city to affirm that this project would be, not is, but would be, a beneficial addition to the city, and would provide, would be an asset to the city.
You mentioned that you would use the letter to be able to leverage grants.
Yes.
And that puts us in a situation where we're binding, in the sense that you have our brand endorsement.
No, you're, you're not guaranteeing...
If you're going to a grant and a funder, right, you're saying here, the city of Santa Paula's endorsed this, and from our perspective, if we go down that route, then we need to know the feasibility of the nonprofit that you represent. For instance, IRS tax returns, income, donors, where's the annual report? How is the community supportive? Because, again, when, we don't want to step into a situation where people are going to question us, well, you supported us, and then come back later and say, well, now, we need funding. Which at, at the end of the day, you're going to come back to us with the funding request, because you're buying a building to maintain programming. And if we're going to go down that rat, path, then we need to put all the cards on the table. And that's my, that's my concern with, with creating this kind of endorsement. However, I will mention this, which is a situation that I am disturbed by, in regards to, we were presented with these packets, all of you received them, and if you read them, and you look at page nine, it says that we already support this project. And that brings into question process. And that goes directly to our city management. Because, why was this given to us with that statement already, and now it's coming to council to make that request? And all of you received this packet in an envelope, because I was, I remember that we were all here, and it was passed out. So, if you didn't receive this packet?
No.
When, who received it?
Just you.
Just me. So, if I...
And the only one, who, the only other person that received that packet was Kelly Long's office.
And I'm not, I'm not putting, this is not to you.
Yeah.
This is to our management. Why? Because they're not the ones who make these decisions. And if they give the impression that we're already supporting this, I call into question, why was this on here? And so, I'd be happy to put this up for your review. It says clearly that we're supporting this project, which is why I'm concerned about it.
As far as the...
And that's not to you. That's, that's to the management. Because the management should not be giving you an impression that we're supportive of our project without the endorsement or approval of this council. And that's why I brought it up to the council as a whole.
So, going back to your statement, though, on the endorsement, and the guarant, the endorsement is simply saying that the project, as it's defined, aligns with the vision for the city, and that this would be a great asset. You are not guaranteeing anything. You are not telling funding agencies that we vetted this program, or this organization. All you're simply saying is that it aligns with the vision of the city. I don't think finances has anything to do with this particular endorsement, because we're not asking you for money, we're not asking you to guarantee it, so that we can go get money. We're just simply saying that it aligns with the city.
But you mentioned that you're going to be using our support to obtain grant funding.
To show that we align, that this project aligns with the vision of the city.
You're using our brand to leverage resources from exterior sources, without us knowing the condition, or the capacity of an organization to be able to be sustainable. And that's, that's the question that I'm calling. And that's why I wanted to bring this up to this council, because of process, but also, because, like I mentioned, I have a critical eye on these things. I want you to be successful, and there's some homework that has to be done, in order to get community support, so that you can be on the pathway to be successful.
Okay, next council meeting, I'll have the gallery filled with supporters.
Real quick, when was this book published, or printed?
It was at the beginning of...
There's a letter and a date at the top.
Yeah.
We'll also need a copy of that for the clerk to have as part of the record.
There's a, they should go with this letter.
Right at the cover page.
January seventeen, twenty twenty-five. So, somebody saw that letter before.
Mr. Mayor, if I might just, is that document separate than the packet that's being passed out, or, is that?
That was in the same packet I received.
I mean, staff would be happy to answer any questions you might have about the process, or how that went about, if that...
We shouldn't give, staff shouldn't give an impression to someone that comes in good faith with the proposal, that we support something, because that was published on that impression.
So, just, just to clarify, just to clarify, when I, when I put a draft letter together, it goes to the city manager for his review as well, so that he understands that there's a letter of support that's going to be issued. And then it also goes to yourself for your review. And then, and then additionally, in this particular situation, because Mr. Lantyne was the requister, we usually suggest a copy as well to the entity requesting. Is this copy something that, you know, suits your liking? Because they haven't seen a version of what the letter might look like, right? So, I did share that with Mr. Lantyne, but he was fully aware that it had not been signed by you. So, if it, it's not been signed by the mayor, then, then it is not approved by the council, per your policy and your legislative platform. And therein lies kind of the, while we were trying to, you know, make modifications to the letter, and seek your support.
But this proposal was given to the county supervisor's office, Julia Brownlee's office, whoever you went to, spoke to.
Yeah, it was Julia, no, it wasn't Julia Brownlee, it was Kelly Long.
And when was that given to her, that booklet?
We met sometime in early February, I believe.
Okay. And I just want to point out that, when you first submitted this request for this letter, it's been two months.
Yes.
Two months ago. So, maybe you were hoping that the letter would have a quick turnaround. And it took considerably longer than I thought it would take, and that's why I suggested that it come, not go through the normal process of a future agenda item, but before the council, because of the time constraint.
And I, and I believe, at the time, it was because it aligned with the legislative platform, it was believed that there would not be an issue with the letter.
You know, many times in the city, I've seen people told why you can't do something versus why you can. And that's kind of been the big problem with different parts of our city over the years. And we're trying to streamline that, and it's unfortunate that this has taken this long. And I think that you've made it clear that it does align with our legislative platform, and you're not asking for money from us. And I don't know where, maybe the mayor can clarify where he says, we're going to ask, you're going to ask us for money for support for the building. I don't know where that came from. When you said that, you know, when he goes to get funding, that'll be for the support of the building. I mean, he said this program's going to move forward, even if he doesn't get the building.
We have a history in the city of not being as clear as possible, and more careful about getting ourselves into situations where we give impressions of something that can get us into situations like this. For instance, Spark, the Arts Collective, making, people make assumptions when we give them a letter, or we say something, oh, we're supportive of it. And then they use that to leverage money. We're indirectly impacted by that. Because they're going to call into question, think about it, they call into question, oh, okay, the Kellogg Foundation, oh, you have the city's endorsement of that. Okay, well, who are your main funders? Oh, the city's not even on there, they're not giving you no money. In the world of philanthropy, it's about brands, and what the brand, the power the brand can collect. And I have no doubt in the merits of the project. I'm trying to protect our city from not getting into a situation where we're going to be, oh, we support it, but yet we don't put no funding for it. That can come back to us at a later point, to say, well, you've endorsed it, with, and we have situations that we've done in the past that have gotten into this. Quagmire. So, I'm just want to protect the brand of the organization, of the city, to make sure that we don't make any, that no one can use our name to raise money for their private project.
Councilmember Crossfire has a question, but hence, you know, what's, like you said, what's happening with Spark? Twelve years ago, they said the city promised them something that nobody can remember ever promising them, and they're holding us to it. So, yes, we have to be careful, and that's why the language in whatever, if we decide to give a letter, has to be precise as to what we're going to offer. Nothing more, nothing less. And I think you're reading more into it, into what the city is going to be responsible for. And I can see clearly what the letter says, it's just we know that it falls in line with our legislative platform. I don't think it says anything more than that. And I'm inclined to support the letter, quite frankly.
I have a question for city manager. In your career as a city manager, have you ever seen a city write a letter of support for a private project? Nonprofit, business, anything?
Well, as Mr. Royas noted, the city of Santa Paula did it not that long ago with the Isabella Project. I believe we did something similar with the Boys and Girls Club. That was probably four or five years ago. They were going after some state funding, and asked for our support. Before that, in my career, I would say, what's important for staff is to have the endorsement of the council, and that's provided either by direct policy or by indirect policy, which is why your legislative platform is helpful to us, because it gives that direction. And so, following that procedure, we study the platform to see, is there anything that aligns? In this case, we felt there were things that aligned. But then we share that with the mayor, to represent the council's voice. And if the mayor, in this case, doesn't agree, or in any case, doesn't agree, or has concerns, the practice and the policy calls for us to vet that with all of you. So...
So, Mr. Lantyne?
Yes.
You, you've wanted to do this project for a while. The, you've been looking for a space, the building came online. Can you kind of, can you talk process-wise about how you got to the production of this, not, I'm going to step back from that, process-wise, what have you done? So, you have, you have an idea, and then the space came up.
So, we've had this idea documented, and a business plan written up since 2012. So, it is a monumental undertaking. And, and so what we've done so far is we've, we've communicated with a lot of the people that we connect with, within the city. They are all very supportive of it, which is why I said I could fill the gallery next, next meeting, if we had to. We've met with the building owner, we've met with a couple of banks that have programs for historical buildings, in order to raise funds. I have some very wealthy friends, which we are paying cash for the building. So, you know, we've, we've been down this journey for a very long time, and I have a complete set of performances, I have a full business plan, I have a full, you know, executive summary. So, it's, it's very well documented, and, and it's been very much discussed throughout the community.
And has, have you done anything with this document so far?
No.
So...
Just Kelly Long's office.
So, this is a draft that, that Kelly Long's office has seen, and the mayor has seen?
Yes.
So, so part of what, thank you, part of what I was trying to get a sense of is, you know, had this document been sent out to fifty grant organizations yet?
No.
Or, is this a draft that you were hoping that with the letter, could be a final draft?
Yeah, the county, the Kelly Long's office, that meeting came up fairly quickly. And so, I was discussing with staff, and I just said, hey, look, I'm going to meet with Kelly Long, and so, you know, it was kind of decided that, well, it fits within the legislative agenda, so we went, we went with it. And maybe we jumped the gun, but, you know, and even Kelly Long's office isn't going to provide us money. What they're going to do is they're going to provide us with resources through David, I forget how to say his last name, Yasha Tomi, or, they're going to... I forget how to say his last name, Yasha Tomi, or they're going to provide us with resources to help align us with the grant makers. We couldn't do any of that until we knew we had the building secured. And we just, we don't even actually have the sign because they have to go through their whole committee. So what they gave us was a verbal yes on the agreement, but they have to do their process to get it. So, which is going to take them about a month.
So, first a comment, then there might be another question, but, you know, something, oh, okay, no, yeah, I'm going to start with this. So something that I have seen in San Pola is that we have missed out on a lot of cooperative arts opportunities because the city put up a roadblock to them moving forward. And I know people personally who finally gave up and moved out of the city because the city wasn't supportive of them trying to get artists together to do art and culture venues where they were going to bring artists together. And so, do we know if it's going to happen or not? No, we don't 100%. We don't know if you might find things during the process that you might decide that this isn't the venue. You know, you're still going through that process. This could, there's nothing in the letter that I disagree with, right? It talks about that this could be a great space for arts and culture and music, and I think that it could be a great space for that. It may turn out that it's not the space for that. But I guess for me, do we know if it becomes that or not? No. But you miss 100% of the opportunities that you don't try for. And we all know as council members that there have been times when pieces of property come up, and we have to move on them because they're only there for a certain amount of time, or someone else takes them and they turn into housing, or they, you know, they get bulldozed or whatever. Like, this is an opportunity to try to do creative adaptive reuse of a historic resource in our community so that we don't lose it like we've lost other resources. So I guess, you know, do we 100% know if this is going to be what ends up in that space? We don't.
No.
But I think we all agree that we want to see more arts, culture, entertainment. We spent hours talking about that on Monday. So for me, I don't, I don't see the harm in us saying that we think that this could be a good use of that space. And I think if, if there was anything that was said by staff that indicated that the city could potentially be behind this, it would be because we've spent so much time over the last few years talking about how much we value arts, culture, and entertainment, and how much we want to see more of it in our community. And so, again, whether it ends up being 100% successful or not, I don't know. But I think that we won't be successful if we don't try. So, so anyway, that's just, that's what I would say.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, every project has the right to fail.
Yep.
So we're not the business analysts here to figure out if it's going to work or not. In concept, it's a great idea. Again, I've already expressed a few concerns about, you know...
Right.
Which direction, but I'm not your business manager either. But I'm wondering if there could just be some addition to the letter, that it's almost a disclaimer, as this is not to be considered a financial endorsement or a guarantee of any funding at this point, that we are in support of the concept for the future, but just so that it's clear that we're not making that type of obligation at this point.
And I would be totally fine with that.
That might make the comfort level be a little more here, that we're not kind of co-guaranteeing or co-signing anything or anything like that, that wouldn't be construed as that, but still just show our support for the project.
Right.
So, I don't know if that's...
Thank you for mentioning that, yeah. Councilmember Ornelas.
I just wanted to say to what Councilmember Crosswhite said about if we don't take the opportunities, we lose it. That's not what this is, right? Isn't this just if we're writing a letter to support it?
Right. But what I'm saying is if, in the past, what the city has said to people is that we don't support it. And then things don't end up going forward because the city doesn't support it.
Right. But even if we didn't write the letter, his plans would still continue going forward like they are, and it would be successful whether it is or not, right?
It has a, it has a better, it's a better story for him to be able to tell if he can say that the city is supportive.
I understand that part, that's what the point of the letter is.
Right.
But the plans could still continue without the letter. I'm just trying to make him understand that.
I can say that with certainty, if I don't get the letter, that's not going to stop the plan.
Great.
So...
Thank you for, thank you for that. Do you have another comment?
I mean, I hear that you work with a school district already. Some of the things that I've heard said, like the collaborative that you met with on Monday and all the other things, obviously, there's still plenty of work to do on moving forward with the project. It was uncomfortable for me, being a new council member and coming from the school board and hearing that something was put in writing that I had even no idea was happening or that the city was supporting at all. That's really uncomfortable for me. I wouldn't be opposed to anything that would bring enrichment to our youth. I'm the champion of that, if you're going to choose something for me to champion here. But it would have been nice to hear about it at least as a council member before it was put in writing and given to anyone. Because I get to Councilmember Crosswhite's point, it was only given to two offices or two people, but it was still given. And if the city, it's saying the city supports it, that includes me too, because right now I'm a council member. So I would have liked to at least just hear about it, and that's not to you. But I would have just liked to hear about it so that I can understand what the project is and have an opportunity to say whatever I'd like to say.
Thank you. Before you do that, I'm going to make, I have a couple of questions. And it was said on this by council member, that we don't make decisions based on compassion, that we have to make well-informed, thought-out decisions. And we're making it on compassion. Oh, let's just cross our fingers and, good luck, here you go, use our name, go get grants and make it happen. Yes or no? Do you have the endorsement of the San Pola Unified School District?
Do I have the... No.
In writing?
No.
Yes or no? Do you have the endorsement of any of the museums or cultural centers that we have in writing?
No, because theirs doesn't...
Okay, yes or no, that's okay. Do you have the endorsement of the Arte en Cultura collaborative, which is excited about it, which I think that these groups and coalitions and community would join forces, right? Is that a yes or no?
No.
Do you have the endorsement of the Isabella Project?
I will. I'm meeting with them.
But right now, you do not have the endorsement.
No, we have a meeting on April 9.
So normally, when you want a city to have your back, you go to community, and the community comes, has your back, and the city, yes. That way it's collectively shared because we want to support you. That's, and you don't have to respond to this, I got my answers. We set precedent by doing this tonight, okay? However the motion goes, I respect whatever decision in the will of the council is. But let's remember precedent, because we have proposals from great ideas in the city, and we heard them earlier today during a session. So be prepared for those ideas to come before you and ask for endorsement, and we cross our fingers that they're successful. Remember what we had a conversation about earlier tonight in our study session about animal control and an idea of a no non-profit. So I, I'm forward-thinking, I think about ensuring we don't set precedent, and I will entertain whatever decision is made at this moment in time, but I just want to remind you about those points. And with that said, you're going to make a motion, sir?
So as you've heard tonight, the city has written a letter endorsement to the Isabella Project. So with that, I move to approve the issuance of a letter of support from the mayor using the revised draft letter attachment as Exhibit B with the amended language to include that there, it does not, the letter, something to the effect that the letter does not specifically cause for any endorsement of funds or financial support.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Before we go into a roll call vote, I'm going to remind the vice mayor that the Isabella Project has over 150 endorsements from members of the community, including institutions. Community. Boys and Girls Club is a mutual partner. They only pay one buck to use a facility currently. Mutual partnership, we're already in business with them, right? I just point those things out for the record because they were brought up before, and we don't want to set precedent or make decisions that put us in a position of risk. Roll call vote, please.
Discussion, since you're in discussion. The Isabella Project, how many endorsements?
They said 150 at the Mural Project.
And how long have they been in existence?
They've been working in the community for a while.
Okay, how long has Army Project been in existence?
Funding coming.
For two months, three months?
Thank you.
And that's, the point is, that's the difference?
One's been in existence longer, so they have the ability to get more endorsements. Just that. Two months versus a long time.
Okay, thank you. Roll call vote.
At this point, I'm going to excuse myself and go back to the room.
Thank you, James.
All right.
I will take a voice roll call vote, Mayor, is that fine? Councilmember Crosswhite?
Yes.
Councilmember Cornejo?
Yes.
Councilmember Ornelas?
No.
If we can do your vote first.
No.
And Vice Mayor Juarez?
Yes.
And Mayor Chavez?
No.
We have that as three to two passing.
Can I make the comment I wanted to make, Mayor?
No. You missed it. No. Sorry. Just for procedure's sake, once a motion's carried, there's no more comments made after the motion. Okay. For the next time. Future agenda items. Mr. Singer?
We do actually have one other agenda item, although I don't think there's any...
The 11C.
For any, I don't believe we have any one from public, so if you'd like, Mr. Mayor, just summarize for the viewing public's sake that we had agendized a follow-up to the strategic planning process in the event that that process still needed to conclude. However, the council was very successful on Monday and last night getting through the whole plan. We have a draft, needs a little fine-tuning, staff will do that, put some budget numbers in there and be bringing it back to you and sharing it with the public, and that'll probably happen in about a month's time. So I don't think there's any need for anything further with this item unless council has any additional comments.
Any comments regarding strategic plan? I think we exhausted it, no?
I think so. Just what's the next step, I guess, for the public?
No public comment.
No public comment?
So we'll, we'll need about three to four weeks probably to flush out the metrics, add some of the materials, information that council asked for, ask our directors to assign appropriate budget and resource allocations, and then we'll have a final draft that we'll bring to you for review at a regular council meeting. Not necessarily for adoption, because we want you to give it one, one last overview, ask questions, and then we'll probably bring it back for adoption with an adopting resolution on consent, or whatever the council's pleasure is at that point. So I'm guessing either the first meeting in May or no later than the second meeting in May. Right?
Second meeting.
Second meeting in May.
Cool. All right, so items 12A, future agenda items.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I need not tell you, it's a very, very busy time, and it will continue that way for the next few months as we go through labor negotiations, budgeting, strategic planning, and the like. I did want to point out that we are actively seeking applicants for both the Measure R Committee, the new committee, as well as a couple of other commissions and committees, and notably need somebody to also serve in a vacancy that's now been created on our mobile home rent review board. That's a board made up of three people, they rarely convene, but they'll have need to convene in the coming months. So we're looking for an applicant for that board as well. We'll need to have interviews by the council, and we're targeting two weeks from now. So if you could give me any feedback as to availability or any conflicts, because I think you'll probably need to have a couple of hours' worth of interviews. We could, we would normally try and do that the night of a council meeting, but because we'll have a closed session, I think it would be best to see if council's available like that Monday or Tuesday. I know earlier in the day is problematic for those of you that work day jobs. So just wanted to check in.
She does too.
A couple of points. April 14 is Harding Park, so I need to be excused.
What time does that?
That's six to seven. I'd need to be excused from that to do it. Tuesday's good.
Can we do a meeting?
Yeah, I think maybe you need to do a mail-out to everyone. And I do want to advise, because you're specifically saying the second meeting in May, I will be out of country on the second meeting in May if they're presenting strategic planning. And I don't know if it would be possible for council date to change or have a special meeting for that. I'd really like to be a part of that if I could.
Okay.
To accommodate the council member.
I'll work with you on those dates if we can. If it can't be done, you can't do it. I'd make sure I have input.
We can try to, to get it on the first meeting in May.
I appreciate that.
Have to see.
Thanks for that accommodation, if you can, I know. All of staff want, ah.
City Attorney.
Yes, and while we're on the topic of future agenda items, I discussed this in our executive team meeting this morning, and I failed to ask the city clerk to add this, but we will be presenting or introducing amendments to the city's fireworks ordinance, so we can get that going in time for the holidays.
Fireworks coming up.
So we also have the need for a closed session, not just for labor negotiations, but also some property acquisition proposals, eminent domain related. So I'll have Christina look at your calendars. I just wanted to know if there was any bad evenings or times that didn't work, but, so you have that conflict on Monday, but the rest of you are in town that week? Okay.
All right. Chair of the meeting, thank you.